No idea.
You might want to grab another one somewhere.
I don't know that there is another one to grab Fred, that's why I have this one, hold on.
We are on. That would work.
That sounded like it worked.
Speak in it, let me hear.
No.
No.
Alright, just waiting for this one to come off for the...
Test.
That one's attached.
Can you unplug one of those and plug it into in? Yeah, it's probably the the base.
What about the base?
It's all about the base, not the trouble.
How many lawyers does it take?
To change it, yeah.
Maybe you have to jump in.
I will.
No.
Three lawyers, it takes three lawyers to change a microphone.
Sometimes on the bottom is an on also.
Chiviad can go too?
Yep, there you go.
Did you try pressing the on also?
That microphone hasn't worked in several meetings.
Yes, it has.
It has not.
You know, there's one here, I don't know if that that cord reaches far enough, does it? This is on.
No.
It's got a long cord.
Try this one, it's got one.
Thank you for watching the zoning board.
Alright, well cordless mic works.
No, he's, they got one, they found it.
You gotta put that back.
They found it.
I'll put this here too, just in case.
I thought that was, no, you take one in front of you and I take the other one. Put it in front of you. Try, try, put it in front of you and he'll take the other one.
This one's wireless?
No. I hereby declare the Long Hill Township Board of Adjustment Meeting, regular meeting of July 11th, 2023, to order at seven thirty-eight. Call to order a statement of compliance, adequate notice of this meeting slash hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting slash hearing duty dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Courier-News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures, any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Electronic devices, all in attendance are asked to mute or turn off their cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Fledge of allegiance. Come on, please, lead us.
Fledge of allegiance, here's a flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we'll call.
Yes. Mr. Aronio?
Here.
Ms. Brennan?
Here.
Mr. Ginakis?
Here.
Mr. Hayne?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Flatley is excused this evening, Mr. Opalka is excused this evening, Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Here.
Chairman Gurek?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, we have the meeting, meeting minutes from June 20th, 2023. Did anyone who's, Gary Scott and Jonathan are not eligible to vote because they were excused, is, does anyone else had a chance to look at them? And are there any changes or comments on them? I'm hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the June 20th, 20, 20, 23 minutes?
I'll move the minutes.
Second? Second, okay, all in favor? Aye, okay, good. Now, the next thing on the agenda is the application. It's a use variance minor site plan application for block 11509, lot 1, zone B-1-5, commonly known as 225 Main Avenue. Application number 22-05Z, known as the Sterling Fountain LLC. Applica proposes an ice cream parlor with a walk-up service window. Applicant is here.
We are.
Okay, would you introduce yourself and your applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board, board professionals, Frederick Zelli, Post Pollock, on behalf of the applicant, Sterling Fountain LLC. As indicated, we are here for site plan approval, as well as a D1 variance for a walk-up window, and a C, presumably a C2 variance, for a relatively modest increase in the existing excessive impervious coverage, all related to the parking lot and the paver pedestrian area that leads up to the window in question.
Let's swear in your witness.
I have John Catapano here, a principal of Sterling Fountain LLC. Mr. Catapano, would you raise your hand, please?
Just raise your right hand, Kate, I gotta get you too, if you wouldn't mind. Now, do both of you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
I do.
Okay, great, thank you. And before, Brad, if I could just interject real quick, just for the record, I reviewed the applicant's notice in this case. It was timely served and the content was sufficient, in my opinion. Certified mail on June 30th, 2023, and published in the, believe the Echo Sentinel on June 29th, 23, thus the board has jurisdiction, in my opinion, just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, yes. Okay, proceed.
Just many things, a little more smooth, I'm going to pass down exhibits now. We have two, first which will mark as A1.
Which consists of what?
It consists of three resolutions from this board from 1995 and 1993, and we will...
Well, just tell us briefly what they entail.
They are approving the non-conforming apartments that are in this building.
All of them?
All of them.
Okay, good.
So the, just for the record, there is a first floor apartment, and then the second apartment, we're not giving it all, there are two apartments on the seventh floor and one on the third floor. The density, I haven't done the math yet, the density graph, and I got, it was way out of whack, to say the least.
Yeah.
If we were trying to comply to them, we are not, it was all previously approved by them, which we have, and these are the resolutions we're doing.
Alright, so that's, and what else are you giving us?
The next packet is four photographs dated 1979, 2007, 2010, and 2023. Aerial photographs showing the state of the parking area over that course of several decades. We are looking for, as I said, a C2 bulk variance for a modest increase in impervious coverage, and really the point of these is just to demonstrate to the board that even if maybe technically not a pre-existing condition as in prior to zoning ordinance, it in fact has been the state of this property for decades, and not only making it safer for pedestrians, and not necessarily, so this would be considered a...
Fred, just, just to clarify, those aren't the pictures that you guys submitted with the application?
These are not photographs, these are aerial photographs taken from Google Earth and Starbears.
Okay, thank you, sorry to confirm.
Yep, thank you.
Do you have one to pass down to us, all those?
There it is.
I'll pass, I'll just, they're running down from both ends.
Okay.
Everyone got pictures?
Alrighty.
We've got a few extra comments, but let's...
I'll take a back.
Yeah, you have to have something for you to refer to, right?
Yeah, exactly. I think everybody's good, right? Everyone's got?
Yeah.
Resolution, okay.
Yes, everybody has the amendments.
Mr. Catapano, just for the record, what is your relationship to Sterling Fountain LLC?
I'm the owner of the building, and I'm the owner of the ice cream shop.
And you're personally managing the operation of the shop?
Yes, I am.
Just for the record, where do you and your families are?
Seventy-six Crest Drive, Basking Ridge, right behind the Millington Baptist Church.
And you've been a businessman in the area for different purposes, is that right?
Yep, I'm a painting contractor for 34 years in the area, I moved to Bass, you know, that's thirty, 1989.
And what's the name of that business?
John's Painting Contractor. And I have two, my in-laws live in Millington, one on Vicki's place, one on Peninsula off of River Road, for over forty years.
And my understanding is the Sterling Fountain is up and running at this point?
Yes, it is.
I'm going to show you a concept plan that's been submitted to the board, I've just told it up to the board members, so we're literally on the same page, out of our packet. And what I'm going to ask you to do is, on that page and also the next page, which is a floor plan design, describe to the board exactly how you have the fountain set up, and if there's any changes between the time these were created and your actual fit out, unless there's any other changes or anything. So you can start with the exterior concept plan.
Yeah, nothing really was changed outside, except for just cleaned up the property, put in a new driveway, and, you know, just cleaned up some, just pretty much cleaned up the outside and remodeled the inside.
Let's stick with the remodeling, or whatever you want, however you want to describe with the outside, the installed paver, sidewalk areas, patio areas, leading up to the windows.
I pretty much added on to it, it was all existing, pretty much, but just a little bit of, just a cleanup, the place was pretty ran down. The owner that was there was a little rough on the building and the tenants, I inherited the building with 32 fines from the state, and it took me six months to clean them up.
What were the nature, what were the nature of those?
Oh, roach infest, infestation, the front doors not having, you know, they close behind you, windows, tripping hazards all over the place in the driveway, I, you know, railroad ties infested with carpenter, horrible.
Okay.
And each apartment infested with roaches, that some of the kids that lived there got sent home from school, from bringing roaches, and it was like, pretty bad.
And what, what did, what necessitated, what did you have to do to get rid of all that?
I cleaned up the whole place, repainted, re-scrubbed, cleaned, hired Humphreys, they're on a monthly program right now, I got rid of them through Humphreys, and cleaned, painted. Some were so, actually doors were falling off, it was bad. You know, I pulled all the right permits with the town, I dealt with the zoning, not the zoning, the permit office, Debbie and Jeff and all the other guys, the plumbing inspector, I pulled all the correct permits everywhere.
So as of this moment, the building is up to code, as far as that goes?
All the tenants are happy, they're clean, I made them happy.
Good.
And the fountain is in what used to be a barber shop, is that right?
Yes.
And the prior owner?
Yep.
Now, we're here this evening specifically because you'd like to have a walk-up window.
Right.
Now again, focusing on the concept plan that we submitted, my understanding of walk-up building is in the, facing your building is on the left side?
Yes.
Off of the, directly off the parking lot, by the parking lot?
Yes.
What is between the cars and the parking lot and people standing in that line?
I, I installed and, and barriers, but very...
Plant, plant, planters, right?
Yeah, plant barriers with all dirt, now all the foliage is in it, and also blocked off, the tenant has actually four doors, the, the ground floor apartment where the old owner, Tony, lived, the grandfather department, ground floor apartment, has four entrances, anyway, I blocked it all off with planters.
So the entrance that we show on the plan as existing door, there's some kind of...
One of the four doors.
The first of the four, if you're going...
Right, right, right.
Okay. Is there a buffer now between where the window would be and that entrance?
I have a, probably a five-foot planter, and now my, we're gonna be putting up a wall of lattice, also next to the window, if you guys okay the window, I'm gonna be putting a decorative lattice over that ugly cement to the window, and then past the window for the ice cream shop, where the tenant's door is, will be matching lattice with all foliage.
So there'll be, there'll be some privacy between that door and the window?
Totally, totally, they're nice people, I actually helped them a lot, this family. They lived there for a long time, it's a long story, but they're very happy, because I had to move them from the, one of the apartments upstairs, that was really infested, it was horrible.
Speak closer to the mic.
So I had the one family move from the one apartment up on the second floor to the ground floor, so I could get in there to clean, and it was horrible, anyway, I made a deal with them, I treated them to all-new furniture and all-new clothes, if they moved from the infested apartment to the ground floor, and I went to Bob's, you know, the cheap furniture place, since they have good credit, and I got a layaway, and I treated them for all-new furniture in that ground floor apartment, and I treated them to TJ Maxx to throw away all their clothes, everything to do with their old life.
Good.
And they now live downstairs, and I, now I am adopted Uncle John to their kids, truly, the biggest, greatest blessing I could, could ever do for a family.
That was nice.
And, and then I got a new tenant after I cleaned that one up, the walls were moving, I got pictures.
No, no, no bug pictures, no.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Discuss this, no, no, no.
The applicant can present whatever evidence they want.
No more discussions of bugs, please.
You're freaking out, Deborah.
I'm totally freaked out, yeah.
Alright.
Just, I'm gonna show you a packet of photographs that we've submitted with the application. And just briefly, I don't have to spend a lot of time on these photographs, just tell us what the perspective is and what's being shown in the photograph, and please confirm that they accurately depict how the building appears.
Yeah, everything's the same, except for on the left where those pavers are down, that's where he had railroad ties that were falling over, and it was just never constructed correctly, it was very dangerous, and, you know...
So those reddish colored pavers, you got you added?
Yeah, he had some other ones in there, and it was just a hazard, so we just, I cleaned it, leveled it, replaced everything, you know, Jeff was seeing everything, you know, the building guy was there, and...
So you've installed the, what, crispy reddish pavers as well as modular wall?
Yeah, just to replace what was contaminated with eighty-year-old railroad ties and tripping hazards and...
So that was the first?
And that was, that was on the state inspection.
They noticed the reference, that's awesome.
Oh, yeah, you, you, get it, I don't know if you remember that property, but...
I'm just curious, what's the state inspection, but what's the purpose of the state inspection?
Most of the family?
Because he has multiple...
Yeah, or the body unit, or whatever, okay.
And they checked like everything, like the door, you know, when you went there, you have to have the, you know, the door closed behind you in case someone pushes you in, you know, insects, windows, I mean, these, it was really horrible, whatever, I don't want to keep on being placed.
Let's go through this, I'm assuming this is the efforts?
Yep, that's all original windows, everything's there, I just painted the brick.
And this, we'll get to the floor plan in a moment, but this, we'll take you into the fountain.
Yep.
Third photograph is showing the pavers and wall that we just discussed.
Yep.
Fourth photograph also.
Yep.
Let's focus on the fourth photograph for just a moment. So the window that you're seeking approval for, be on the right-hand side?
Of that existing window?
Where that first window is, or is it next to it?
To the right of that.
But it's gonna take the place of that window?
No, that window is part of the apartment next door.
Oh, because there's, that, that was confusing, because you have, on the one document you submitted, it looked like you were replacing, it says here, we propose service window replacing existing window, it, it, that is confusing, when you said the concept plan.
That is an error that I'll take credit for, actually.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we had that in our report as well.
Yeah, that, that was a little bit of confusion.
To the right of that.
We look at the fifth photograph.
Okay.
Will it be a double window?
Yeah, it will be, I didn't purchase it yet, but it's gonna be like a Dunkin' Donuts, a little automatic twenty-four-incher, very small.
Yeah, so when you open it, it's 12 inches, but when you close it, it's a four inch.
Yeah, it's not big, and then it's gonna go automatically.
And you said between that window and the window that's there is gonna be the lattice or the door, where's that lattice gonna be?
So, let's look at the fifth photograph.
Yes.
I'll have it testified next time. Yeah, so let's take it from, from the window, so a few feet over will be the, the small, in, in small window, I can make it any size, but 24 to 48 inches at most, which will be there, here's where I have all the barriers now coming out, right, lined all the way across, just in case, so nobody could run out.
Oh, yeah, nobody can run over somebody, yeah.
And then the window I would like to have would be there, and then here I have another planter box going this way, to block, so these people have privacy.
Is that before, between the two windows, or between the window and the door?
Actually, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have two, two, right now it's here, right now the barrier is here.
Okay.
At least they hear.
You mean between the window and the door?
It's next to the door.
It's next to the door and it comes out to there, so it's, you know, five foot...
But you're gonna have one to the right of that window?
Yes, because I'd like to give them even more pri, you know...
Both of them are having lattices?
Yes.
Forming like almost a wall?
Right.
Okay.
So that window is to the apartment that's not part of the...
Yep, this is, so my, the, the shop goes from there down.
From the window to the right?
To the right of the side.
And then now, so I would like to put the window there, this is gonna have decorative lattice over here, so nobody can walk in, not, untouch their door or anything, you're not even gonna get near them, but they're really nice, they don't care, but I'm still, I gotta do it. Then, that, all the way, all this is gonna be eight foot, that whole foundation wall is gonna be decorative lattice, so you're gonna think you're in a beautiful, rich, luxury,
Right, right.
foliage and Bernardsville Mountain Square lattice, that's what I'm doing.
An ice cream shop.
Yeah, but just, outside, some quality.
Yeah.
So we, when you walk there, it's gonna be nice.
You have seating areas and a kind of benches area?
I actually have two little picnic tables there right now, right there now. But one more thing is, we're probably not gonna use the window, you know, all the time, now that I'm open, like, if I was to redo this, but I'm too invested in it now, I probably wouldn't put it in, to be honest with you.
This morning, because I was looking at other ice cream places, they all have windows.
And they don't use them, right, I didn't know, but I did wanna get light in there, and at the same time, in case, but now, my new thing is, Long Hill has so many baseball teams, and when I have a good ten to twenty seniors, my age, or our age, some of us, they get cranky quick, so when these teams pull up, you know, where they're eating next door, and then they come after the hamburger?
They go to the window, yeah.
It's loud in that little store, so now, I'm gonna use that window for the team, I'm gonna go to the coach and say, hey, come outside, I'll personally serve yous all, like whatever it takes to get them out of the store.
Well, it's a good idea to have a separate line, so you have less people...
Yeah, right, but we'll look, like, if you go there Monday, Tuesday, even Thursday, it's gonna be closed, like the other ice cream parlors, because I want you to come in, enjoy the inside, I made it like old world America in there, it's pretty, it's a good feel-good, everybody loves it, I got the music on, actually, I had the senior center from Long Hill call me the other day, the bus driver, so he says, listen, we opened too late, we opened up at three, he says, you know, they all wanna come to your shop.
They want, they want to be bussed there, yeah.
So I says, no problem, I'll open early for you, what time you wanna come? So, we cut it here, he said one, I says, how about two? So he came at two o'clock, the bus pulled up, thirty-five seniors came out, and I had on Frank Sinatra, and they started singing, and we had the best time, they all sat in there, you know, out, inside, outside, they were like, they already made a second appointment.
Good for you, it's great.
Good.
It was the best, and I didn't wanna do it, but I, we had so much fun, it was the best.
I'm just gonna ask you, the rest of the photographs are largely at the parking lot, just flip through them and let us know if you see anything that's not consistent with what's actually there.
No, everything's the same, you know, I just repaved the driveway, because it was still dangerous with, you know, the thirty-year-old, you know, driveway or whatever, people could trip, I wanna be safe, you know, I took out extra insurance, having this place, but, you know, it's a lot, and I just, you know, I'm a good guy and I wanna protect myself, so, there's, you know, the place was pretty bad, so I pretty much redid everything just to make it safe, and this is, see the picture here, this whole line has those beautiful flower box things, that you can't even budge, it's filled with dirt, stone, and I'm not done, I'm gonna do, now the last ones, if I get okay for the window, I'll put the window in, do the lattice on the con, foundation wall, finish the little wood.
What, could you address the increase in impervious coverage, if, you know, what they, where it is and how much?
What have you, in other words, what have you installed in terms of pavers, walls and whatnot, that...
Didn't take away anything.
That were not replacing something already impervious, like replaced grass or anything?
Everything's identical.
Is, is that, that area from the blacktop to the building, was that all impervious at one time, or was there some dirt there?
It was there.
No, what I mean is, was there grass or dirt there?
Were there any flower...
No way, all the same, I'd like to take some of this away, but I know that's against the rules, so I didn't take anything away.
No, no, that's not what we mean, it means, did you change for what is dirt or grass to anything that was not dirt or grass?
No, blacktop, got replaced with blacktop.
Okay, but according to your application, you have a 2% increase in your impervious coverage?
Have you been discussing with where the pavers are by the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the parking area, there was some grass areas and stuff?
No, there was hedges there.
Okay, well, that's, that's impervious.
Impervious.
Yes.
Okay, there was hedges there, but...
Were they in railroad tie boxes, like flower boxes?
Yeah, they were big, big, like, they're still there, if you look where my garbage pails are, it looks like he stole them from the railroad across the way.
Bobby did.
They were these big, and, believe me, those, there wasn't a lot of dirt there, it was more railroad tie, I don't know what he was doing there, if it was like meant to sit there and to hedge, it wasn't a true...
And I remember this.
It was really bad.
Those were inside, in this area a little bit?
Yeah.
And so would you say that for both aesthetic and safety reasons, you replaced what was there with what you can see here now?
Two hundred percent for safety, and, but not itching, because those railroad ties were really, they were moving, with the carpenter ants. It was really, and the hedges, I thi, I think if you look at the building pictures before I bought it, you could see them, it's not a decorative, and if you won, like, you know, again, I just wanted to make it nice, I'll take it up or put planters there.
No, 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 that, that was, that's not the point of our asking, we just wanna...
We're trying to ascertain the...
No, I didn't wanna go over anything, but there, there was many railroad ties there and stone.
Yeah.
It was weird.
So now, and we're looking at the, actually, the third, third photograph in the packet here. So this is the area where you're talking about, they usually be these benches, are you gonna have seating benches right in there?
Yeah, I have them there now.
Yeah, you didn't take a current picture, they're there now.
Yeah.
No, it's very, very current.
Planters boxes somewhere on the property that...
Yeah, the flower boxes.
Kind of is curvaceous?
Yeah.
It got rid of it, so I guess...
On this side?
No, flower boxes are right here, right, here I have...
To kind of block you from the parking lot, so nobody can...
Go past.
Run into the building or people standing.
Actually, you know what, maybe I'll put up those bumpers, I was thinking of that. Balloons.
Balloons or something, yeah.
Or you think I should put the flower boxes a little prettier?
What are the flower boxes and planters, what are they made of?
They're, they're made of pressure-treated wood decking, you know, pressure-treated decking, one-by-sixes, and filled with stone and dirt.
With plants?
Yeah, they're unmovable.
I think that, that looks a lot nicer than yellow balloons.
Yeah, so then I'll block that whole thing with three more six-foot-long coffin-looking things.
But still protecting for the vehicles versus what?
Totally, there's no way, because I did think of that, because I, I wanted to wait to this, because now I have the guy coming in to put the lines down, you know, I'm not done yet.
And repave that whole parking lot?
Yep, I just got that done, and now I was gonna get the lines, I got my, all my handicap stuff drawn out, I hired the company, it's all going in this week.
Where are the handicaps spots going?
Well, I have to get one, right where that car is.
Right where that car in the first picture?
Yep.
You put one, right?
Yep, I, I, well, one is enough.
Okay.
That they said. I'm trying to do everything correctly.
Just so we have it clear on the record, we are showing one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten parking spaces, is that accurate? Is that accurate or?
Yeah.
Even with their handicaps?
And that's it, that was, was there. I'd like to take away more land so I could put another spot.
Now that, now that parking lot, that parking lot, sir, is going to be for both the tenants and the customers of your store?
Yep, and I also have many spots in the front of the building.
Right, but that sign on the building is inaccurate then because it's not.
Says the tenants only.
For tenants only, you're gonna have to change that for customers and tenants.
Yeah, because I gotta get back to the store.
Yeah, you gotta go customers and tenants.
Yeah, yeah.
So the sign will be removed and?
Yep. And I'm gonna really put up those things right away within like the next two weeks.
Well, you could have a sign that says, cut tenants and customers of, of.
Yeah, I will, because I get killed with the guy next door.
Yeah, yeah, right, you don't want, yeah.
You don't even know.
Do the, um, pardon me.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, do the, uh, do the tenants have, you know, do they each have a number of spaces or anything like that i- in there?
My tenants happen to be local, um, workers and they're really nice and, um.
Would you swear in, please? Oh, you did? Okay, alright, good.
Two of, most of them don't drive.
Okay.
They're local, but two of the apartments have cars.
Okay.
So for the tenants, they're only using up two spots.
So it's, it's not like, you know, they have like reserved spot, okay, got it, okay.
And the tenants are so nice, the one girl said, John, I'm gonna park my car on, in the front. So people could come in and out, you know, easier, I was like, whatever you wanna do.
Okay.
I don't care, like, people are finding their way, you know? I, I, I thought in the beginning, I was a little nervous, like, what happens if it's a hit? But they're actually walking there, chest's not down, down the hill, it's like.
Yeah, more people are walking, yeah.
I don't even know where the baseball teams are parking. No, they're actually parking down by Biagio's cuz I seen them walking up, like, heard the people.
Station and walked down to the other people that have spots.
Yeah, it's all working out and the police are really nice, they come, they're so nice. You know, and then you know that, those parking spots for the railroad? Over there? I don't know the rules of that, cuz it doesn't say after a certain time, but, you know, they, the, the restaurant guy, you know, they're, 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 it's all good so far.
Good.
I don't think it's gonna get any busier than what I've had so far, I think it's gonna come down.
Are you gonna be open all year round?
Yep.
Okay.
Cuz the demand, everyone's saying they want, and I'm gonna, yeah, it's a cute little place to get out in February.
Like, I know, uh, there are a few places that aren't open all year round.
I'm opening.
Okay, good.
What are, what are your, since we're in the middle of the summer now, what are your current summer hours?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, three to nine. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, three to ten, but everyone's yelling at me, they want me to open up at one.
Yeah, why you, why you eliminate it to three, just, uh?
I don't know, it's just too much ice cream then, and I don't.
I, I mean, I would, I would see in the winter three, but in the summer you may wanna open up.
And then, uh, you know, and then like I thought about putting, like, make, selling coffee in there, but I don't wanna be rude to Biagio cuz he's nice. You know, like, so I'm good with the ice cream for now.
Okay.
And, um, then I ha- I got, just got forced to open Sunday. People were writing, um, you know, things to me, why aren't you open on Sunday? Please, that's my only family day, so. So anyway, I was like, I didn't know what to do, I gotta be nice to everybody, so this sun, now we're open Sundays, one to nine.
Okay.
I just have two questions for you before we move on. So what I'm hearing from you, from your testimony, is that the purpose of the window is to accommodate the community the way that you're observing? That they would like to use that space or would be convenient for the community the way that they patronize your business? Is that accurate?
Like I said, if I was to do it again, I wouldn't be putting this window in, but since I'm already invested in it. I would, like, if you went there with your children or your nieces or your grandchildren, and you don't wanna go in? And there's a little, you know, sitting, you know, picnic table, you just order and sit.
Or like the groups of, uh, baseball teams or.
Yeah, really for that, for extra, on, on busy nights I have to open it.
Yeah.
But otherwise, it's not gonna be open.
And then the second question is, it sounds like the answer to this is yes, but I just wanna be clear. Your tenants, your current tenants are aware of this plan and they've not, they're obviously not here? And they've not voiced any concerns or objections to you about it?
No way. It's so happened.
As you cleaned up the building.
Right, got rid of the load.
And even more, I give them whatever they want.
Plus ice cream?
They also get a lot of free. No, big time.
Ice cream is inherently beneficial.
I believe in commerce, I believe in commerce, I'm definitely giving them, they're hooked up.
And, and would you say it's in terms of, you know, any kind of negative effects? But because of, you know, this is kind of a unique site where you have, the window's really gonna be facing the parking area. You, you have it all lined up, so it's not gonna be blocking the sidewalk, it's not gonna be blocking anyone, you know, entering their homes, anything like that?
I think just for, for an emergency, like also, I'm gonna give back to the fire people in the Long Hill, uh, Gordon Knowle. I'm gonna have like a fundraiser, you know, if I have like a fundraiser, everyone, you know, I could tell my tenants, go out of the parking lot. You know, maybe like, you know, like, or just maybe have the police, like, would stay in the front, just like, get a, you know, when they collect money, the fire guys? And like do something like they do in Basking Ridge, when you drive by, and I'm gonna give out cones. Like I did the Easter hunt with the woman, uh, that runs the, um.
Lisa.
Rec. The rec's scam department.
Yeah, yeah, a rec, right. You know, I gave back.
Don't forget about the Long Hill zoning board.
Stop.
John, let me just, because I just follow up one of the questions. The, what you've done to the, primarily the exterior, uh, with the additional walls, the favor areas, the repaving. All of that is designed to keep the place safer for pedestrians who are going to be using it, for people parking and so forth.
Cuz we, to be honest with you, when my insurance guy came in the beginning and, cuz I was gonna rent it out. I had a, a, all-state insurance guy wanted it, um, a nail salon woman wanted it, a barber wanted it. Um, a few people wanted it. And I was gonna rent it out. But when I got, my insurance guy came, he was like, you gotta do something here, we can't even insure you. Like, how is people gonna park in your parking lot or, and go and get a haircut? Look at this place. The, he did like a homemade job there, it was really bad. Look at the pictures.
That, that window is not facing any residential property, right?
No.
Just, okay.
No.
So there'd be no, um, intrusion by any residential property? Um.
Facing the railroad.
The railroad, right, and open land.
John, let me show you what's also included in the packets and what plan.
Which changed?
And that's, so it's just, you told me it's changed, so let the board know what's different. Uh, but let's start with one basically, now, is the window still in the same location, that's still where you're proposing to place the window, any question?
And if you went on the outside where we looked at the other picture, take two feet from that other window, two to three. And again, I'm blocking that all off, they're gonna have their own little cove of lattice, plants, and they're gonna, you know? And she said she won't even use that door cuz she has three other doors.
Yeah, okay.
Like, I, I could even close that door.
We're gonna focus on the floor plan now.
So this little, um, thing's not there anymore, the, the, the case goes straight across.
And you have to pay closer to the entrance door.
The what?
The cash register is over by the entrance.
Oh, yeah, I move, right, I moved this down to there, right, right, right.
Yeah, this was just a, uh, a little bit of a brush.
And I gave it to him in the beginning, like.
We'll blame him, he got it.
Yeah, you blame me, that's okay. How many people can the interiors?
Well, I just have two, four, six, seven, like, eight, nine, like, ten, eight to ten.
In, you, the limited time you've been open, have you observed most people sitting inside, are they mostly taking stuff out?
Nah, it's so tight, a little bit, but it's, it's really for decorative reasons, I put up little bistro. It, they were usually, they're twenty-four inches, I made mine twenty-two, they're mini and I bought little, are they called ice cream parlor chairs? They're small, little cute chairs that come back in the day, so it's really just for, for the look, but are a lot of people sitting in there? I don't know, because when they come in, I actually had to put a rope up that says enter now, you know, so they go around the rope. So in the winter, I think they're gonna be sitting in, in the winter.
I noticed that the one night I, 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 I was there, that most people sat outside, they sat on the benches outside.
They love it outside. And now the Sterling Hotel is, would put out their outside seating, so it's like a little, um, instant, uh, Montclair. You know, with his little, but he's not even serving food out there. So I don't know, but it just looks good. And actually, my people were sitting at his tables. And I don't even, I just bought the picnic tables quick, because I had some other cheap chairs there, it was like, I just wanna make everything safe. You know, I don't want anyone sitting on a chair and falling, you know, I don't know what, you know what I'm saying? So, and my insurance guy was like crazy, he's the guy really put it all in my head to replace everything that's, was damaged. Tripping hazards.
Let me focus you on the next few pages in our pack, packet, uh, essentially the technical details of the window. Uh, it, it doesn't matter whether the answer's yes or no, are you in fact using this company?
Yes, I'm probably gonna call them, they make it for Dunkin' Donuts, the same windows.
And essentially, what's being shown in these spec sheets is essentially what you're going to do, maybe not absolutely identical, same concept.
Same window.
So that's a forty, what, how wide is that window?
This was shown, basically a forty-eight by forty.
Forty-eight, okay.
It's forty-three and a half by forty-seven and a half, so.
Okay.
The way Americans seem to, uh, do measurements.
Each window's like that, just like Dunkin' Donuts or Slade, yeah. And I'm gonna have the automatic, uh, thing, but again, I'm, I'm really not using it.
All the time, yeah.
If I'm open fifty hours a week, I don't even know, just say I'm open forty hours a week, when it's off, whole team comes, I'll open it.
Well, you got a large crowd.
Yeah.
It's an alternate method of sale.
And it's gonna allow air, not air, yeah, air and light in the store, which is weird, that store.
Yeah, you don't have any windows, except for the front.
It's like, but, you know, I'm not cooking anything, but it, you know, but. Even be a place, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, that's not my intention to elicit testimony on the resolutions or the aerial photographs, I think they speak for themselves. That's obviously with the resolution, Mr. Capitano wasn't involved at the time.
No, no, but I mean, could, right, I mean, could you just go over the fact that these resolutions covered the existing tenants, correct?
Uh, they do, yes, both of them, as I read them, cover all four apartments. Uh, there were some changes apparently, uh, between ninety-two and ninety-five, uh, that the, uh, Mr. Snagger came back. Uh, but they do recite four apartments in the same locations as they are now.
Okay, and that was.
At one point was for moderate income, that expired.
Okay.
In twenty fifteen. Uh, is there a moderate income use now or?
No.
No, okay, so that expired by its own terms.
Okay.
So to be very attentive.
Alrighty.
Any further questions for Mr. Capitano?
Let me just ask one, cuz we're, we brought up the resolutions. Uh, Kate, would you able, can you confirm that they don't need a D-one use variance for the, the apartments? And they don't need a D-five variance also for the apartments?
Yes, yeah, because the, the D-one we mentioned, you know, you didn't wanna start the thing, but you know, they're there. So we just wanted to make sure everything was covered. The D-one was gonna be because, cuz now, um, apartments aren't allowed on the first floor. But according to these resolutions, these have been there since before that was an issue. And the density of, you know, these approvals, um, you know, e- everything was granted appropriately, so no further variances are needed with regard to the apartments.
Okay, great, thank you.
I do wanna thank Deborah for finding it, because we should so definitely.
Thank you.
Yes, that saved us a lot of potential technicalities tonight.
Um, any other questions by the board or the applicant?
No.
Any? Yes, go ahead.
Just, I, I mean, I know that Liz in her letter had some questions, I guess you'll get to them, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
Liz had some questions in her letter.
I was gonna get to her.
Yeah, I, I'll, but my one question was, in terms of the flow inside? I know the register is by the door and the window is gonna be on the opposite end. Are you planning to put another register then by the, that second win- by the window?
Yeah, actually, yes, not to, right, cuz it's pretty tight, so, yes.
Yeah, cuz I saw, yeah, it would be.
Yeah, so you're not running back and forth.
Actually, I purchased two registers and I just hooked up one so far, so that will have one, yeah.
My wife loves, my wife loves your register, actually, that's the favorite part of the store.
Antique.
Yeah.
That's hiding the, uh, the other one.
With that style, like, and it's sterling, it's all.
It's too bad they couldn't make one and make it electronic, but make it look that way.
Yeah, I wish, but with the modern one, it's right in front of it, you know, it's a computer, so you don't.
But you'll have it so that the flow will be, you know, okay.
Yeah, and now I just got, um, my Seltzer in too, so now I'm gonna be.
Ice cream soda.
Yep, no, um, egg creams.
Egg creams.
And I, I'm making rupia, but now I'm gonna make it with real rupia syrup.
Right.
With the Seltzer.
John, just to confirm and, and looking at Liz's questions again. Uh, you do, we're showing ten parking spaces. Uh, and you've indicated that that is accurate?
And one handicap.
Six along the back, four along the front?
Mm-hmm.
And one of them being handicapped?
Yes.
One of them being.
And you're gonna be restriping them, so there will be ten, okay, great.
Restriping and labeling.
Uh, you've talked about the number of hours, talked about the time of year. Uh, do you stipulate that any signage that you install will be in accordance with the ordinance and not require that?
Yeah, no, I'm not gonna do anything, I may put a canopy up around that little thing.
A little what?
A window.
Oh, just over the window.
Yeah, like a little, just the same size, like the little round one.
Well, that, like, but similar over the door?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it won't have a sign on the canopy, right?
No lettering or anything on the canopy, just a decorative?
No, just decorative and, you know.
Think about that.
Maybe down the line, but I'll go to zoning, I may wanna, y- you know, put that antique canopies in the front, like what they have. You know, um, I had a guy came and gave me a price, cuz I was thinking about.
Roll-up ones or permanent ones?
I don't know, I'm just looking into it now, cuz my goal is to, all the windows, like, you know, the parking lot side? I'd like to put the antique canopies over every window to really make.
Oh, you don't mean the windows in the front of the building?
Yeah, every window up in the apartment.
Residential.
But not the big windows in front, on the store?
Well, maybe a, oh, yeah, a little bit, to go with those, I don't know yet. I'm just, I love making it.
You wouldn't need any variance.
And that's not part of this application.
No, but that, he wouldn't need a variance.
I don't think so, but.
You understand that you would run anything like that, yeah, so.
Well, yeah, yeah, and exactly.
Guys have a strictest zoning thing in Jersey.
Right, I was just gonna say, that's not part of this application.
No, no, it isn't, but.
And if you.
Everybody tells me good luck before I come into the permit office and to this meeting.
My God, we have such a bad rap, come on.
Well, any, anything that he did that did require variance would definitely be referred to you by the zoning officer, so.
Is there any other questions that you wanna address from, uh, the, uh, planning board, uh, planning, uh?
Did you say you were twelve months a year?
Twelve months.
Yes.
Yes, twelve months. Uh, you covered everything in the, uh, planner's report?
I'm, I'm satisfied, yes, thank you.
I'm not sure if it's entirely material to the application, but there was one thing that I had written down, um, also in the planner's report, uh, number of employees?
Yeah.
It's varying, it's unknown, right?
And where they park, where do they park?
Actually, they get dropped off cuz they're college kids, not even really dropped.
So you, you encourage them to get dropped off and not?
Oh, yeah, they do, yeah.
What about your older employees, I know it's an older gentleman there?
And they're actually local girls too, like, uh, yeah, so. Uh, actually, they're not, they, I had them helping at the cash register for the openings and all that, but there's no more. My sister's helping me, she's gonna be in there, she's parking down the block.
Okay.
Even when I come, I park down the block or next to my garbage pails up. And, uh, it's working out, so, you know, I mean.
Okay, and as you said, the majority of the people are walk-ins.
Mostly are walk-in, truly.
Yeah.
The whole town, like, came alive.
I, I would just also know, you know, I know that this is, we're talking kind of like on a micro scale here because of the size of this. But when the parking, the parking requirements, the parking ratios do take into account employees.
Yes.
Sometimes they specifically mention it, but in general, it's intended to take into account employees of a restaurant, employees of food service, et cetera.[1732.25]
And street parking is specifically accommodated in this particular zone?
Yes.
Exactly, with, that's, so it's gonna get capped on top of it, too, so, yeah.
Yeah, I got like five spots there, and even on the side.
I, I thought the street...
I think I got an extra nine.
Yeah.
Between the front and the side.
Unless you're competing with the, uh, when the restaurant's open.
The Sterling Hotel, yeah.
The shed that's, uh, that's seen in this photograph, that looks new, and I, and I see it on this concept plan?
Yep, that's existing.
It's an existing shed that you've replaced?
Just re, re...
Refurbished?
Refurbished.
And what's in there?
Um, dry goods, uh, like, um, I'm putting, um, what do you call that, the cups, and...
Oh, it's, it's storage for your business?
No, just a couple of things from the business, doesn't have to be, but it's just, um...
Well, what else is in there, uh, stuff to maintain?
Rakes, the, you know...
Okay, go on, eat stuff.
Warmer shed stuff, except for, honestly, I did put a few boxes of cups in there.
Okay.
No food.
No, no, okay.
And things like that are sealed, so they're...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, already, like, in, just in the store, cause my wife's like, you know, very clean, neat, crazy.
That's a good thing for restaurants.
All my cones, we bought big Tupperwares with snap things, so in the winter, no rodents are gonna go in the boxes, in the store.
Yeah.
We're anti, you know, rodent and...
I'm hungry, so I'm hustling.
Your wife is neat and clean, and you're in it there.
But I was like, I was like, alright, honey, there's no mice here, but she restored, bought all the Tupperware, so now I gotta take out all the cones and put them in there and snap it, she's gotta hear the snap.
Just for the record, Humphreys treats the whole building, not just the apartments, right?
The whole building.
Perimeter inside, outside.
Everything.
And the shed area, the whole thing.
There's not, no cockroaches in that building.
Okay, can we move past the bugs?
People made fun of me that lived there, or, you know, like, that they knew, it was like the cockroach building. Not no more, there's not one cockroach.
We're not gonna name it.
I'm gonna have nightmares, I'm not even kidding.
Um, are there any other issues?
So, just to, just to be clear, what, what are we talking, four employees at any given time, max?
No, that's too many, two.
Two?
Yeah.
Okay.
On a busy night, maybe, maybe three.
Three, maybe, on, to be honest, Friday and Saturday nights, three.
Okay.
But right now, every other night, two.
Two.
And I'm only gonna have one from three to six, it's, it calmed down a lot. The beginning was, you know, now it's just...
Yeah, um, so, I just, just sort of record, uh, there are no publics sitting outs, out there in the pews, so I'm going to open and close it to the public, since there are none.
For both questions and comments?
Yes, for both questions and comments, because there is no public, so on the record, just put that on the record.
Record the comments.
So, um, any other questions before, okay, any other questions from the board?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Do you have any issues?
I'm good, I'm satisfied.
All right, uh, do you wanna sum up?
Just, just briefly, so we do have a D-one variance, uh, walk-up window is not permitted use in the zone, so that's the only reason we're here on D-one. Uh, we, of course, then have the obligation to show that the, uh, location is particularly suited for this particular use. Uh, having a walk-up window for an ice cream store, I think is about as particularly well-suited as it could be. Uh, I think that's, uh, obvious, there is, uh, really no detriment that we can see, uh, even through the testimony shown, we've gone out of the way, uh, to provide safety for the patrons who would be standing at that window, uh, from vehicular traffic and so forth, we've provided places for them to sit after they've taken their, uh, their food. Mr. Catapano, I will ask one question that we didn't ask you, uh, you have garbage cans and so forth outside, so to prevent litter problems?
I just hired, uh, the town, you have, uh, brand sanitation, I, you know, have a commercial, the green garbage thing now.
Yeah, but what about, uh...
But the garbage cans out there.
Cans where people can throw stuff?
Oh, yeah, plenty.
Okay.
Yeah, def, and at night, you know, I just had, right now, I have a commercial, you know, green garbage.
And where is that gonna sit on the property?
It's, there's a little area.
There's a little area that's...
Over there, and I may even put it somewhere else, it is plenty of spots, right now, I just got it delivered five days ago.
But it's not taking up parking, then?
No way, no parking spot, every parking spot's crucial.
So, that's, that's essentially where we are with the D-one variance with regard to the C variance. Uh, it's a C two, the benefits outweigh the detriments. Uh, I've gone through and in the den, listed out the benefits under the, uh, municipal Andrew's law, it's accomplished through this application, uh, basically general public, uh, general welfare, providing, uh, a nice establishment for people to patronize, but providing it in a safe way, uh, healthy way, uh, in terms of, uh, indicated as far as the confidence of the building, the safety of the building and so forth, that's been accommodated. Um, that's, uh, purpose A, purpose G, providing sufficient space, uh, for variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, industrial uses, so we have both recreational and commercial here. Uh, and we've done that in a way that is safe and attractive, open space for patrons. Uh, and finally, uh, purpose I, to provide a, a promoted, desirable visual environment, again, as the testimony about how it's set up now, how it's going to set, be set up, uh, and you see the photographs as well. So, we think we've accomplished all three of those purposes, uh, regarding the negative criteria, and again, we don't consider it is any, uh, what could possibly happen, uh, as a result of the minor, uh, increase in impervious coverage. Uh, there's no indication of any kind of drainage issues or what have you. Uh, we're going from seventy-seven percent to seventy-nine percent, uh, it's a minor increase, and the, uh, benefits of improving the area, making it safe for, uh, pedestrians using it, uh, certainly outweigh any detriment that is possibly be established, uh, from that minor increase. So, we believe we've established both the positive and negative criteria under the D-one and the C two. Thank you for hearing us this evening, we appreciate the positivity.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Fred, just to confirm, the impervious coverage increase comes from the removal of planter boxes that were out there?
Essentially, some flower beds and some flower boxes.
Okay, and then replacing them.
You know, we're erring on the side of caution, it might not even be that much of an increase.
Okay, all right, Fred, just wanted to confirm, for accuracy, thank you, okay, I'm good.
Alrighty, um, Gary, would you like to start the deliberation?
Sure, um, it seems like you've really improved this property a lot, and, uh, it seems like it's been a great addition. Uh, the, having a walk-up window makes great sense for an ice cream shop, uh, control the flow of traffic, and you've made all accommodations to make it as safe as possible for the patrons, uh, so I would be in favor of this application.
Jessica.
I'm also in favor of the application, I think that you've met both the positive and frankly, I agree with, with the application, that there's really no negative, um, here, that the benefit to the community absolutely outweighs any potential perceived, um, negative point with regard to, you know, the very small amount of impervious coverage increase. Um, and I don't see a negative as to the, to the walk-up window, and I also agree that it's particularly suited, um, and frankly, I think adds to the, you know, community feel and aesthetic of what you're trying to accomplish with your business, and so I'm for the application, and thank you very much for, for, you know, bringing this to our community.
Jonathan.
Um, I have to agree with, uh, what has already been said, I don't have much more to say. Uh, thank you, Mr. Catapano, for, for improving this. I will say one thing, peanut butter ice cream, you need to have peanut butter. I noticed last time I went, there was nothing with peanut butter, I think it might have been chocolate, but I liked the vanilla peanut butter. I don't know, it was chocolate and peanut butter, there was some vanilla.
He already, he already gave his opinion for the...
I, I appreciate peanut butter ice cream, so, that would be an improvement to the, to the neighborhood as well, but of course, everything else is very, and I am definitely in, in favor of, of this application.
I got two new flavors.
Jerry.
I, I couldn't agree more with what, uh, my colleagues especially, Jessica has already said, she covered the legal aspects of it, so I won't go into that, but, um, it's a great, great improvement to the downtown Sterling district, it's, it's wonderful. It's, uh, it's, it's something that we need there, and it's a great boost, and hopefully, more people will, will leverage what you started and, and continue that. That's exactly what the planning of that district envisioned happening. We talked about the parking and that sort of thing, and that's what it was designed for, so, good for you for doing that, good luck there.
Scott.
I couldn't agree more, it, it is a great addition to our town, um, a walk-up window, it just adds to the ice cream shop, that would be stupid if you didn't have it, because you have the seating right there. I agree with everybody else, this is a great improvement to our town, I'm in favor of it.
Tom.
Thank you for cleaning the property, I think the towns thank you more, uh, the township and, uh, the patrons, thank you for cleaning up that property. Many people will come to your house, come to your property, and all will leave with a smile, I'm sure. Um, and, uh, thank you for having a nice, neat and clean wife, that's very good, very important to this application.
What?
He said his wife was neat and clean.
That was testimony.
This is testimony, and makes you always be, uh, and, uh, the positives clearly outweigh the negatives, I'm totally in favor of this, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I concur with my colleagues, um, I, I, and I do appreciate you cleaning up that, that building and, and the site, because it was getting run down, and it was looking shabby, and as Jerry said, that's what downtown was envisioning, a walk-up business, something that encourages people to walk downtown, we need more of those type of businesses downtown. Um, it encourages an old-time downtown feeling, and, uh, that's what we need. I think the walk-up window will be a good addition to the business, it'll, uh, accommodate larger crowds, uh, you know, accommodate not, overcrowding the interior of the store, people go outside, get their ice cream, sit down, uh, continue their walk. Uh, so I would definitely be in favor of it, so, yeah, good luck with it.
Thank you.
Uh, I think you should have more hours, though, you know?
Eventually.
Eventually, yes, the other business goes.
If we hurry up, we can get there before they close.
Right, yeah, if we hurry up, yeah.
Because I do wanna maybe like get some coffee in there, like I said, but I don't wanna be rude to...
Right.
The fellow guy at the corner.
Um...
Even though my coffee will be much better.
Better.
And different, different hours.
Yeah, um, alright, uh...
And no discussions of bugs when you come into the...
No, no bugs.
Coffee, ice cream.
Do you wanna, um, tell us some of the conditions and things?
Well, I'll get to that, uh, so, quick, uh, summation of the, uh, application before the board. Uh, applicant is seeking minor site plan approval, uh, two variances, one, a D-one variance for the, uh, walk-up window element of the ice cream parlor, and then a bulk variance pertaining to an impervious coverage increase. Uh, sixty-five percent is permitted in this zone, and seventy-nine percent is proposed, and I don't believe there are any conditions outside of the standard fare that we have.
Just to make sure that he mentioned the lattices, uh, the privacy lattices for the...
Privacy lattice.
Cause they weren't mentioned on any of the plans.
And extra in the front there.
Yeah, because that, none of that was mentioned in the plans. I, I, that was one of my concerns when I looked at the side, because I didn't want the...
I love that idea, it's gonna go straight along the...
And, and I like the idea of that better than a wall, than a fence, than a fence, yeah.
Counsel, there was also a stipulation that the signage will comply with the...
Yes, any signage, uh, the parking signage or anything like that.
Yeah, oh, that's, that's one, parking signage should be changed.
Right, the one that says parking for, for business and tenants only.
We remove it very quickly.
Yes, and then, then the, any store signage was separate, yes, those two.
And the barber shop thing is taken down already, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Seems like something he would do on his own, but...
Yeah, that was the first thing I took down.
Trying to change and say ice cream, right?
Well, no, remember I said Tony's Barber Shop? I loved unscrewing that. But you guys did a great job with making that town, with the lights and the, the veterans' flags, and even veterans been coming, so, my... Everyone's just like so happy there.
Good, good, go ahead.
All right, so, allow me to, uh, rephrase what I said before, there are three conditions that I totally knew about, I had to... No, I was kidding, uh, privacy lattices will be shown on the plans, uh, the ones that the applicant testified to in the course of the hearing. Uh, all signage will comply with the terms of the ordinance, and the applicant will be removing the parking-related signage that's on the building already that restricts signage solely to tenants.
Would it be all right to just have the conditions reflect what'll be constructed as opposed to all the plans? We don't have an engineer, so...
Yeah, just, uh, just make sure that, yeah, we don't need re-done plans.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, that, that's, uh...
Right, so privacy lattices will be installed.
Right, and the signage, the parking signage will be removed and re, reinstalled correctly.
And plans will be installed as the...
Yeah, and additional plans.
So, additional plans, okay, okay.
Do I hear a motion to approve this, uh... I'll move it.